I'd like to call the April meeting of Whittier School Committee to order, please. If I could have everybody at the table. If I could have everybody stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Do we have anybody here tonight for public comment? This is your opportunity. No? Hearing none? We'll get right to the business. But before we start, I wanted to thank everybody on the board for your support. I know some of you probably had other ideas, but you all came together and you made it a unanimous vote, and I cannot tell you how much I appreciate that. It means a lot to me. And I also want to thank Charlie, and he's not even here, for three years of being chair and doing this. He's done a great job, and I've got big shoes to fill, I think. So, having said that, do we have a motion to approve the minutes of budget workshop?
Madam Chairman.
Yes.
Madam Chairman.
I'm okay with chairman.
Madam Chairman.
I'm okay with that, yep.
All right, good. I move the approval of March 28 minutes of budget workshop meeting.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second. All in favor? Any questions first?
I'm going to abstain on it because I wasn't here.
Okay.
Also, I wasn't here.
All right. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none? All in favor?
As a matter of fact, if it's an abstention, you have to call a roll.
Oh, I do? I don't just ask for abstentions?
Nope. Has to be a roll call vote with abstentions.
Okay.
What is a roll call score?
Okay, if you say so, we will do that. Dick? No, it's okay.
Yes.
Yes, Scott?
Abstained.
Lisa?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
David?
Abstained.
Gary?
Yes.
Joanna?
Yes.
And Tony?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Chairman.
Yes.
I move the approval of the minutes of the regular school committee meeting of March 28.
Do we have a second?
I have to abstain from this as well.
And you as well? Okay. Any further discussion? Hearing none? We'll do a roll call vote. Dick?
Yes.
Scott?
Abstained.
Lisa?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
David?
Abstained.
Gary?
Yes.
Joanna?
Yes.
Tony?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Chairman.
Yes.
I move the approval of March 28 executive session minutes.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none?
I have to abstain as well.
Well, yep, we'll have a roll call vote. Dick?
Yes.
Scott? Lisa?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
David?
Abstained.
Gary?
Yes.
Joanna? Tony?
Yes.
Okay. And now, we go to the Treasurer's Report.
Motion to accept.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Okay, thank you. Old business. This has been on the agenda for, I think, four months now. Is there anybody who has not done their self-evaluation yet?
I just received mine tonight.
Okay, because you've been away. Pardon?
I haven't received one.
You'd -- okay. Do we have another copy?
Sure.
Lisa, could you also give me one? Two, please.
I would take one, too, Lisa.
Think I'm phenomenal.
Thank you.
I don't remember why I did it or not.
And, um...
You can just click that I think I'm phenomenal.
Well said.
Do we have a check-in on that? No. I didn't hear one.
So...
It's a self-evaluation, you choose the first spot.
So, now, how will we handle this? Will we wait till the next meeting?
Actually, if everyone could, if those that have not completed it, if you can get it to us in the next week or so, that would be great, so we can have it prepared for the next school committee meeting.
And then we'll have a report on it at the next meeting.
Do you have enough to make a quorum?
I'm sure you do.
How many do you have in so far?
What, for the ...? Well, I don't know how many Charlie has. He hasn't given me the ones, like, mine isn't here. I did mine early.
I just wondered if enough people have done it to make a quorum, and you can move on.
I'm almost done.
Okay, don't make me laugh, because it makes me cough. All right, so, if you could get that in, get it into the office here as soon as you can, and we'll get moving on that, so we can take it off the agenda. Brianna, would you like to do your report now?
Of course. Good evening, Madam Chairperson, Superintendent Lynch, and all other school committee members. In drama/chorus, the members of the chorus and other musicians are meeting in the music room after school on Tuesdays and Thursdays, singing and playing instruments. Singers are being chosen to perform the Star Spangled Banner at Whittier's graduation. Also, the advisor is beginning to plan the senior variety show on May 25. The key club is working with Interact and Peer-to-Peer to plan another walkathon in May. This time, the theme is based on the Relay for Life, and any money raised will be donated to Relay for Life. Also, they're beginning to prep and talk about their end-of-the-year activities. The chess club continues to meet as scheduled. Students are enjoying learning the game and playing, and learning from seasoned players, while developing new players as well. Upperclassmen also express sorrow with the passing of Mr. Fitzmeier, the longtime chess club advisor. However, they had great memories to share. Peer-to-Peer is holding an annual animal cracker fundraiser to raise money for supplies to be purchased and donated to the MSPCA. In addition, they're beginning plans for the annual Relay for Life to be held at Norgon Essex Community College June 8th and 9th. The Mala UN competed at UMass Lowell and won an award for the Science and Technology Committee. Everyone that attended enjoyed the experience, and some will also attend the next competition at Northeastern University on May 18th. Environmental Club is working hard to keep up with recycling duties, and continues to move throughout the building to collect recycling from all areas. Whittier Tech's first robotics team worked hard at two three-day competitions held at UNH and Revere High School. For the team, there is a driver for the robot, a programmer, a coach, and two human players that move game pieces during the match. On competition days, all members of the team went to their competitions and brought posters and costume props to show their spirit and support the team's love of the sport. The team received a tremendous amount of support from parents, mentors, sponsors, and sponsors, including donations of their time, money, materials, and even meals to make sure the students got their full experience in being in first robotics. Lastly, each member of the team used their student ID and punched in and out of a time clock system, and collectively, they worked a total of 2,980 hours. The team is already planning for next year's season by recruiting new students for the team and planning outreach events this summer. The baseball team will have a new look this season, as eight of the varsity starters have graduated last year. The team looks talented and have been practicing hard. They are young but excited to compete at the varsity level. The boys are excited to get the season underway, sporting their new pinstripe uniforms. The track team has had a great start this season. There are over 100 male and female athletes that are participating. The athletes and coaching staff have been extremely organized, which has resulted in strong results for the athletes getting ready for their first meet on Tuesday, April 10. Every athlete has been able to practice every day unless they have had work or stayed after to keep up their studies. They plan on another CAC championship, as well as some athletes going on to Division III states and beyond. The girls' lacrosse team is three weeks into the season. There have been a great, there's been a great deal of improvement in that short time. Last year, they only had 13 players from Whittier and three from Sparhawk School in Amesbury. This year, there's a total of 25 players altogether from Whittier, Amesbury, and Sparhawk School. There are some promising newcomers from Amesbury, as well as some major improvements from Sparhawk and Whittier. Their first game was this past Monday. The boys' lacrosse team opened up on Monday at Mystic Valley with a 6-4 win. The team has 35 candidates and eight returning starters. There are also 11 seniors on the team this year. They're looking forward to a promising season and hope to continue with their success. The softball team opened up against Greater Lowell today, Wednesday, April 11. They have eight returning starters and are hoping for a good season. There are some promising newcomers, and the veterans from last season are excited to defend their title.
That's it? Excellent. Sounds like a busy spring season.
Thank you very much.
Brianna, if I could just ask you, the senior variety show that's on the 25th, is that, like, is that during the day?
Yes.
Is it open to the public? I mean, no? Okay.
I'll answer that for you, Brianna.
That's okay. All right, if we could... And if we could have our superintendent's report, Mrs. Lynch?
Great. Good evening, Madam Chairperson, rest of the members of the school committee. Tonight before you, for informational purposes, our hires for Above the Influence Program, attendance makeup program, the Spring Musical Pit Orchestra, and resignations of a maintenance mechanic, a route bus driver, and an English instructor. Budget update, as you know, tonight, we voted on our budget for the school year, or for next year's school year. MCAS update, the February Biology retest results are in. 12 juniors took the Biology MCAS this past February. Eight of the 12 students passed, so we have four more students that will take the test again in June. For the class of 2018, 100% passed the MCAS. Class of 2019, 99.8% passed the ELA. In math, 98.5% passed, and biology, 98.8% passed. So I will hope that they'll pass before the end of next year. Superintendent's update, on Thursday, March 29, I attended the Superintendent Mentor Consultancy Group meeting in Wakefield. I have one more meeting, and I will have completed my three years of the induction program for the superintendent program. On Monday, April 2, I hosted budget meetings for finance committee members from Groveland, Rowley, West, Newbury, and Salisbury with Ms. Cosmas and Ms. Dontrmont, so thank you for your support and help. On Monday, April 2, I met with the Haverhill Police Department along with Principal Leganis. We took a walk around the building and looked at safety of our building, and we're going to try to make a few adjustments to make the building that much safer for our students and our staff. On Wednesday, April 4, I attended the Merrimack Valley Chamber of Commerce Business Expo along with Bev DeSalvo and Kara Cosmas. Our guest speakers were the owners of the Battleground Coffee in Haverhill, which sounds like quite a coffee store. I need to go and visit. On Thursday, April 5, I hosted a budget meeting for finance committee members from Georgetown, Haverhill, Newburyport, and Ipswich, along with Ms. Dontrmont and Ms. Cosmas. On Tuesday, April 10, I attended the Salisbury Chamber of Commerce Legislative Meeting with Ms. Lowell and Ms. Leganis last night, and Senator Katie O'Connor-Ives was there, and Representative Jim Calcorce were there, and we had a chance to meet with them. I also want to mention the passing of Mr. Fitzmeier. He retired last year. He was a longtime math teacher here at Whittier. He will be remembered first for his love of math. His license plate actually said "math" on it. But he'll also be remembered for his family and his love of reading. He would always bring me in bags of books, and I would think, "How does he read so many so fast?" But he was a real lover of reading and of math, and, you know, it's just, it's a real loss, so I just wanted to mention him tonight, so, thank you.
Could I ask you one question?
Sure.
The resignations, are any of them retirements?
I believe one was. It says it on there. On the memo.
Oh, it's in here? Okay.
One was a retirement.
Okay.
Ms. Lowell for admissions?
Yep. Okay. Ms. Lowell, would you join us, please?
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the committee, and Superintendent Lynch. In your packet, you received this year's admission report, and I've included a summary comparison to last year's data, and I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Are there any questions?
Yes.
Is it a trend everywhere that a lot of the schools are basically going down?
Mm-hmm.
What are we doing?
Well, this year, we started our new online admissions program, which I think was really successful at keeping access for students in our communities to be able to see what we have and to go right online and apply. It's kind of verily streamlined it, I think, from the student perspective and from our perspective of being able to reach them.
So, at Haverhill, there really isn't any surprises, but a couple of the towns are dropping down.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you. Very helpful. If I could?
Oh, I'm sorry. I forget.
I just wondered if the sending communities are amenable to the computer application program?
We're not the first school of the communities to use this program. Essex North has also used it the year prior to us, so I think that helped break ground a little bit for us. We spent some time doing some training here. The program also offered some training at the, you know, with each school district of the sending schools around using the program. So, I think, and overall, it's a fairly simple program to use from the user end of putting information in, so I think it, it's a, it's a learning curve, but it was a pretty quick learning curve, I think, for all of us.
Is it, is it part of your job description, or if you will, to project the demographics for the coming, let's say, five years from now? Are we going to have...
Ms. Lynch asks us for numbers a lot.
Have you been looking at that a lot?
Yes, yeah.
Now, what do you project?
Well, the, we know that the districts and the community districts are dropping, so we know we have to try to keep our access as open as possible to those communities, to keep those numbers fairly stable for us.
Does this drop go right down to elementary, right down to kindergarten and first grade?
Yeah, when we do those reports, it's, we're looking from eighth grade down. Yeah, of what, of what our potential enrollment can be.
Thank you.
Dick? Go ahead.
One quick thing, I forgot. Can you explain to the public that if they didn't get in on April 1st, the letter with the next move is?
Yep, so, any student who was denied admission at this time was given a reason for that on their letter relative to how their application was scored, and we look at every single one of those students again. At the end of the year, we ask for their report cards from their sending schools. We review all of those applications again, as if they're a new applicant again, rescore them, and we'll reach out to those students again. Then, students are also eligible to reapply at mid-year grade nine, entering grade 10, and entering grade 11.
Thank you. I just want to re, I just lost my train of thought, I'm sorry. I just wanted to tell everybody that I've had a lot of experience with a lot of people that didn't get in on April 1st, and if they do the right thing with the school telling them, they will be moving in. Thank you.
Scott? Scott?
Have we looked at more modernized advertisement via social media, like through Facebook with an online link, Instagram with an online link? Are we doing that? And do we have numbers on, with each of those, how many applications that you may have received via Facebook, via Instagram, Twitter, those types of things? Do we have?
Ms. Lynch can probably answer that for our IT department.
Yeah. I mean, do I have numbers where the actual link from hitting the website to the...
Yeah, just curious, yeah.
No, but I can tell you how many people have looked at our website...
Okay.
...based on, on the advertisement on Facebook and...
And you're doing specific advertisements on enrollment?
Yes.
Okay.
And we're doing actually one right now about our STEM camp for April vacation.
Okay. There is some good, like, I know Facebook's different things to track, like the link hits on specific pages to see if they're looking at that.
Yes, and our IT director can tell you exact numbers about that.
Just curious on the success.
Because Facebook does give you good information...
Yeah.
...based on your advertisement. But I'd really like to say also that Ms. Lowell has really ramped up our recruitment efforts, and I really want to thank you. The online admissions program has not been easy or flawless, but they've really worked at trying, because we believe that this is how students and parents are going to enroll. Kevin Williams has redone our Facebook page and has made it extraordinary, which is kind of our motto. So our, our, our actual, our internet, we're getting more hits based on our website on that. We've really changed the way we do our tours. Our tours were done the same for a very long period of time. We've changed, we've had more student involvement in the tours, because we think our students are going to sell our school much better than an adult ever could. And then, again, the social media piece, we're using social media much more, looking at doing open house differently. So, you know, we've had some kind of bumble, you know, mistakes along the way, but I think that it's, it's kind of an exciting time to see, you know, new things going on as far as our recruitment efforts here at the school. So I really want to thank you, Patty, for all your work.
And the GoToCTE online program that we're using does give us data. So, for example, when we sent out our January recruitment flyer that we always do, we're able to see that spike in the GoToCTE online admissions. So we were able to actually track how many applicants applied during that period of time of that recruitment. At our open house, we were able to see how many students applied following that week after open house. So we do, we are tracking that information to see what kind of advertising helps students access us.
Thank you.
Patty, I have one question. On the, the applicants that don't get accepted on April 1st, you say you look at them again.
Mm-hmm.
Do they have to ask you to do that?
No.
To take another look? Or you do it automatically?
Mm-hmm.
That's wonderful. Okay, thank you. Oh, guess we have another question, Lisa?
I have a question about how the appeal process works. How the appeal process works, how it differentiates from the general path.
Yep, so, and if a student wants to, or a parent wants to appeal, there's, it's written in our policy, the steps to do that, of appealing to the principal and the superintendent.
And, you know, you have so many seats available, so once those, I mean, if you can't get your seats filled with district, do you do choice?
That's up to the committee.
Eventually, that might come down to that.
That's for another day.
We've been accepting zero choice for...
This is our third year?
Two, three years now.
Yeah, I see that. I just didn't know what this year was going to be like. Is there anything else? No?
Good job.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Leganis, you're up.
Good evening, Madam Chair, and congratulations as well on your appointment.
Thank you.
Superintendent Lynch and rest of the school committee members, I'm happy to say that our games are going finally, thanks to Mother Nature is cooperating. And they started last week and this week. Today, I just ran into Mr. Bowles, and they just beat Essex Tech 1-0 in the baseball, so we have our first win out there. Freshman orientation, some of the, some of the dates you might want to jot down on your, on your iPads. Freshman orientation is scheduled for May 19. The Mark Crash is scheduled May 22. These are all senior activities, and some of these are closed off to the students, the seniors, only. The Mark Crash, May 22. The awards night is scheduled for May 23. That's the honors night for May 23. The senior talent show that Madam Chair spoke about is on Friday, and that's usually seventh, eighth period, and all seniors, and we see some of the great talents of them, as well as senior night and prom. That's going to be, I'm sorry, the senior sign-out and the prom, that's May 29. And then graduation is the 31st, that Thursday, at 6:00. And then the makeup day is that June 2 on Saturday. So that's kind of what's coming up. And I say that now, because May, soon as we get back from break, May's right around the corner, so. On Tuesday and Wednesday, meaning yesterday and today, we spoke, the senior class, senior class advisors and the assistant principals met with the senior class in the assembly to review expectations on discipline and the, and all these events that are coming up, you know, in the next, next month or so, and it's going to fly by. As of today, the last day of school for the students is Tuesday, June 26. So, that's, hopefully, Mother Nature, no more snow, please.
Please.
Carpentry students placed second last year in the Furniture Trust, the Eco Carpentry Challenge, which is held at District Hall in Boston. They're again competing in that competition, May 10. They use their skills again to develop fun creations from a variety of materials. A couple months have been going on, and they're, they're developing from these materials desktops. These are all scraps, desktops, upper cabinets, file cabinets, and plastic sheet stock, and the students worked together and came up with the theme Fun Fun, F-U-N, Raising. So it's kind of neat. What they did is they developed the two main centerpiece items, our full-size ski ball game, which is, it's going to be great. Hopefully, they're going to have the, maybe they'll be number one in the contest in next May, they'll be able to display it like we did last year. So there's a full-size ski ball game, as well as a pinko game that they developed. The students are competing with 10 other schools and are very proud to represent Whittier once again, and believe they're, they're going to have a winning game. So, that's what's going on.
All right.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ms. Cosmas? You're up.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Madam Superintendent, members of the committee. First of all, congratulations, Madam Chair. Secondly, thank you for your support of the budget. I greatly appreciate that. And lastly, in your packet, you have the nine-month variance analysis from July through March. And at this time of year, I always like to remind you that budgets are prepared well in advance of when we're actually going to be using some of the line items, and they're definitely prepared in advance of the school year. You just voted tonight for next year's budget, and the school year doesn't start until late August. So as this report shows, there are some accounts with negative balances, but as it also reports, there are plenty of balances with positive amounts in them, and the positive far outweigh the negative, and so the district is in very good financial shape for nine months into the year. And as always, I will come to you at the end of the year with transfers to balance the accounts. Do you have any questions?
If so, thank you. Well, we do.
I'll ask a question, just because it just sticks out. Sporting goods, minus 41,000?
Yes. For whatever reason, the athletic director was supposed to have a pre-buy at the end of last year, and it didn't happen, and he needed uniforms, so he bought them out of this year's money, and I will balance that account at the year-end. There were uniforms that needed to be replenished.
Did you punish them?
Not harshly.
Thanks, I just looked, asked a few questions.
Okay, no, I appreciate you asking. Anything else?
He took my question.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right. So where are we now? We are, okay. We have to do the reorganization of the, the different subcommittees that we have. Is that what was, is that what's on here? Does anybody want to change where they are?
That was easy.
Does anyone, anybody want to add a committee that they're not currently on?
I'm happy.
It's like, we're going to stay the same. Okay. Thank you. That was easy. What?
Oh, nothing.
Oh. Did every, I don't, do I have to read it?
What is it?
This is the annual agenda, the reorganization in April, the annual agenda, the school committee goals, the variance analysis, on down through March of next year. Do you want me to read them?
No, thank you.
Okay. Everybody has them? All right. Yeah? I guess so. The only thing we changed, we, we need to remember that we changed the time of our meetings, too. We'll mention that later, I guess. And...
Note, Chairman, your name's going to be on the bottom now?
I guess so, yep. Yeah, I got confused when I saw committee chairperson, Charles Labella, and I thought, was he supposed to do something? But, no, that's me, I guess. Okay, and the variance analysis? Carr, Carr did that, yep.
We have that.
Subcommittee reports, executive, Mr. Labella. Is anybody else on that committee that would like to speak?
I don't think they've met.
Oh, they haven't met, okay. Instructional and personnel, have, have you met with, no?
Do need a meeting on that.
Oh, sorry, yeah, I had a question about instructional, do we need to meet? Okay. Do you like to meet before the next school committee meeting, is that...
I believe the date Lisa had for us was the 23rd of May.
Okay, May 23rd.
It was 23rd, yeah.
Okay. So not, not during the school committee meeting? No, May 23rd at 3:00.
And that's instructional personnel, right?
Right.
Right, 23 at 3:00. Plant operations, Mr. Tucker.
We have not met, but we stand ready to meet as needed for the new football field.
Okay, okay. Dick, salary and negotiations?
Yes, last meeting, the school board, you gave us tentative numbers to use. Tentative agreement signed right now, and we don't have the final numbers of how the teachers voted on it today, but I believe it passed. And I don't know if you want me to go on what we talked about?
I think we should discuss in an executive session and then come back.
Thank you. That's it, thank you.
And policy, Mr. Irving?
Policy has not been, we need a meeting. I believe we have a few things to check on.
When would you like to meet?
How about 6:00, half an hour before the meeting on...
The May meeting?
May meeting.
Okay.
May 9th, 6:00.
6:00.
Is that all right, Lisa, or is it?
Yes.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is our meeting dates, and we have changed. The date is still, will still be the second Wednesday of every month, but we are going to bump the meetings up to 6:30. So we will change that, we will meet May 9th at 6:30, except for the subcommittees. And we have no new business posted. And we do need to go into, okay, here we go, this is good. I need a motion to enter into executive session to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining with the teachers' union. As an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the school committee, and upon completion of executive session, we will return to open session.
Second.
Okay, we need a roll call vote for executive session. Dick, excuse me.
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Lisa?
Yes.
Paul?
No. Yes.
Brett? Yes.
Yes.
Okay, and I say yes.
Can I ask if Cara Cosmos, the business manager?
All right, we are back in open session. The committee has voted to ratify the teacher's contract, and we will now take another vote in open session. So this is to ratify the teacher's contract. And it will be a roll call vote. Dick?
Yes.
Scott?
No.
Oh, we need a motion to do that. See, I'm thinking I'm doing it. Could we have a motion to ratify the contract?
So moved, second.
Second, okay, now we can do the vote. Dick?
Yes.
Scott?
No.
Yeah, Lisa?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Gary, Joanna, and, and myself, yes.
No.
No?
We'll be adjourned.
Okay, second? Okay, all in favor?
Thank you.